I'm nervous.
Hey, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm fine, sir.
... Do not take it personal, and if you do, I apologize ahead of time. But this is some valuable information that I think needs to be brought out during our tax negotiations. First and foremost, number one, Sparta citizens are also Allegheny County citizens. This means that the Sparta citizens pay just as much taxes as county citizens and then some. The county property tax rate is fifty-nine cents per one hundred dollars. Sparta property tax rate is thirty-nine cents per one hundred, which means it equals for the Sparta residents that they're paying ninety-eight cents per one hundred dollars on property taxes. How many on the board live in the town? Nobody. So it doesn't affect you whether you raise the collection taxes on the town or not, does it? It doesn't. What is the percentage of the Sparta taxpayers that pay their taxes at the same time that they pay their county taxes? Does anybody have that information? I'd be willing to bet that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the citizens of Sparta pay their town and county taxes at the same time in one location. Thirteen years ago, the county and the town came into an agreement to provide its citizens an easy service to pay taxes in one place at a rate of one point five percent. The town would pay the county to collect the property taxes. At this point in time, approximately seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars worth. There is also additional cost of thirteen hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents for advertising, postage, and postage rates, which gives a grand total at this time of nine thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars fifteen cents. And that's approximate, and that's cut a little bit low. Town of Sparta has approximately twelve hundred and seventeen parcels that are currently taxed. Allegheny County, including this number right here, has fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-three parcels. At any time that the town of Sparta ever raised its rate with its property taxes, the county also would get its portion too, maintaining the one and a half percent. For instance, if ours was thirty-five cents and we bumped it up to thirty-eight cents, your, your, your volume goes up too, the county collection. Currently, this shows nine dollars per parcel that the town gives the county to collect its taxes. Under your proposed four percent, this would bump it up to eighteen dollars per parcel. That's doubled. And that means that the town would have to pay just to collect that, which is approximately at, at the year, twenty thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars is what that would round out to with the advertising cost and postage. We're looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars, give or take some. And these numbers will change with the rebound. The town of Sparta uses their tax collections for the following services which we provide the citizens of Sparta: water, sewer, garbage pickup, police protection, town employees, park, roads and, and streets, and anything else that comes up with the town. That's what comes out of our tax collection. Town of Sparta right now, with the last census, had a population of sixteen hundred and thirty people with a poverty level of twenty-seven percent. Allegheny County's population, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, with a poverty level of twenty-eight percent. Town of Sparta has nine hundred and thirty-four units for housing. Forty-two percent of that is rental properties. Allegheny County has eight thousand one hundred and eighty units for housing, and that's twenty-four percent are rental properties. And all that information is straight off the census website, 2019. We both have the same median age for both areas, town and county, forty-nine and fifty years old. So that's, that's a wash because our folks are in median age, and I'm right there at Did a little research. Took the initiative to go around and emailed several counties throughout the state that collect their municipality taxes. Hurford County is the number one leader at three and a half percent because of Murphy's Borough over there in the far western part of the state. They have also four other municipalities in the county, and they were at four percent, but they dropped it to three and a half this past year. Watauga County charges Boone, just the city of Boone, two percent. Nash County, two percent. Wake County, which hosts the state capital, charges Raleigh one percent to collect their taxes, along with Craven County and Forsyth County at one percent. Here's where it gets interesting. All these counties, I contacted, talked to their tax, tax collectors. Iredell County with six municipalities. Surrey County has four. Mecklenburg has seven, including Charlotte. Pitt County has ten. Brunswick County on the coast has nineteen. But these right here, except for Brunswick, charge one and a half percent. Brunswick, three quarters of a percent. In conclusion to my, my statement that I'm opening up with, in the previous years, this is what happens. If we take it over, the previous years of your taxes that the county has collected stays with you guys because we can't collect that. That's your, that's your baby. All tax assessments will still have to go through the county if we take it over or you take it over. Either way, the tax office, the tax assessor, has to go out and do all the same amount of work, same thing, over and over. If it is agreed upon and the county continues its collection of property taxes, the town of Sparta needs this money each month so that we can generate and do our thing, work in our budget, pay our bills, those kind of things. These are just some stats that I wanted to bring to you, the commissioners, that may not, may or may not have known this. And I'm asking you to reconsider your four percent mark and bring that down to something that's reasonable for everybody. The citizens of Sparta shouldn't be penalized because that's exactly what's going to happen. For every half percent, is that right, Ryan, half percent? It is...
For everyone.
For everyone, it's a half percent that we have to go up. For every one percent more that you collect, it's a half percent that we're going to have to raise our taxes. Now, I'm on record as saying I don't want to raise taxes, don't want to do it unless absolutely necessary. Several of you are on record as saying you don't want to raise taxes, and you're on record for saying that. This is a perfect opportunity to show the people what we mean, if we can work it together. That's my presentation, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back over to you or anybody else that would like to take the floor at the time, or is there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for Wes at this point? Any other, anybody else have any comments?
I have questions. Mr. Carter, what is the very least, the very least that you could do this for, for us this year? Because anybody in the room, correct me if I'm wrong, we've sort of passed the point of no return on this year. So again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have any choice but to ask you to do our collection this year. So for, for everybody, I've heard this and I've heard that, for everybody here today, what is the very least you can do it for?
If you're asking me specifically.
This year.
Town manager and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And we talked about this. And the four percent that's been referenced was the draft presentation that was allowed to be presented to the town. Along with that, I was given the opportunity to negotiate that rate, which the town manager and I sat for an hour or better one afternoon and talked about. And we explained different ways of partnering on different projects, not just this. And at the conclusion of that, that rate went from four percent to three percent. And that was the rate that, that I told the town manager that I could go with.
This year.
This year. However, it is my understanding that one of the suggested changes from the town was to make that effective for three years as opposed to just a single year. So that suggestion has been incorporated into the new agreement.
It would appear to me that we don't have any choice, and it's, it's wonderful to get together, and I certainly am going to shut up very quickly and let everyone else share their thoughts, but it would appear to me that we don't have any choice but to go with the three if that is the least that you can do it for. Because in our discussions, we, we, and we shared with Ryan at, at one of our recent meetings that we'd rather have it at two, but you all have already discussed that, so, so we're at three. So I don't see that we have any choice but to go with you, at least for this year, for the three percent, and then we can certainly work out the rest. But I don't see that we have, have any other choice, and that would be what I would say do, and I will shut up.
Let me ask this question. We're talking about basically a three-year contract.
That, that was the request that I was...
That would be the contract, the three-year contract. We're at two. You say you're at three. In the spirit of cooperation with the commissioners, agreed to two point five. I mean, I'm, I'm asking the commissioner.
I, I would like to ask, what is the reasoning for the, for the big hike?
It's actual dollars it says is costing us to do this, and it's, it's, it's in labor.
In labor?
In labor, and we all know, labor's went way up.
I want to show you something. I want to go back to my little thing here. Thirteen years it's been done the same way with the same amount of people.
Another question. I, I asked the question. We're still working on John's question. I mean, I'm just asking for some kind of a meeting of minds.
One of the things the county manager brought out, that when this was initially done, apparently the only thing that they looked at in previous administration was the cost in the tax office. Where our extra labor is coming in is whenever they receive, and please correct me if I'm wrong, County Manager, whenever they come in, they've got to verify the payments in the financial office, and this is where we are looking at roughly four and a half hours a week.
Yes, sir.
So that is four and a half hours of additional labor that was not taken into consideration initially. Whenever you started taking in the salaries, the benefits, and everything else, this is where the increase is coming in.
And, and I will expand on that if, if everyone would like for me to.
Please.
Okay. It was already pointed out, we're all aware by the terms of the agreement that the town pays one point five percent of the taxes collected. In addition to that, as it was pointed out, you pay postage and you pay advertising. So, you know, if you'll give me just a minute to look through my notes, but I can tell you exactly what all this translates to. And I will use the taxes collected for the most recent year. The tax amount was five hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. That's what was collected on behalf of the town. One point five percent of that is seven thousand seven ninety-four seventy. And these numbers are just furtening up the other numbers with the, with the actuals. The one and a half... The one and a half was the seventy-seven ninety-four seventy. The town paid one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents in postage and one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents in the advertising. That brought the total to nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Now, I've got eleven years worth of information right here. I do not have the full because the tax administrator changed shortly after this agreement took effect. So our current tax administrator does not have that. I also have a spreadsheet that is a front and back spreadsheet and I'll provide that to anyone. It starts with 2020 and it goes back to 2010. And it identifies what the Sparta's billings had been during that timeframe, what the agreed upon percent and a half brought in. There's a really interesting part of it that goes along with the bills and postage. And when I asked what percent, how we came to that number, I couldn't get a response, but apparently it's a fifteen percent number that was agreed upon sometime for the cost of the bills and postage. So when you're looking at your bills and postage number, that's a fifteen percent number of what the county spends. And then the big, the big question in all this is when you look at parcels, when you pay to advertise those, it's all over the board. And, and each, in each year that these are supplied, you don't have a standard rate to advertise. You know, I, I can look at the first page and there's a variance between two fifty-six a parcel, all the way up to four forty-eight a parcel. So the advertising cost is a contributor to this as well. So if anyone would like this, I'd be glad to pass these around. In short, over this period from ten, 2010 to 2020, the total billings for Sparta is four million, nine fifty-eight, six sixteen and thirteen pennies. And again, I'll pass these around. Keep in mind, up until the year 2015, the county also did your motor vehicles. And in 2015, that changed because the state now provides that. So there is an RMV is how they classified that from year 2010 to 2015. That amount was one fifty-seven, eighteen fourteen. The bills and postage for that ten to twenty was seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents. So the total money handled by the county in that process was five million, one eighty-eight, two ten forty-five. And of that, I also did the last column was what was paid to the county over that timeframe. I didn't go through them all, but the bottom line number was, for handling five million, one eighty-eight, two ten forty-five, the county received eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents. And again, if anybody wants this, I'd be glad to pass them around.
I do have a question for the county manager. It's my understanding that if we sold these properties on the courthouse loans, the county ate all the legal expenses?
In the past.
In the past?
Yes, sir. Now...
We were not reimbursed.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a count over ten years? Because I think you need perspective. If that's more than two or three, then...
I don't have that number because...
Yeah, I think a little perspective will go a long way.
What I want to identify is we've talked about the, the actual one and a half percent of seven thousand, seven ninety-four seventy. Doubling that number, which is what three percent does, provides fifteen thousand, five eighty-nine forty. So what this agreement, bottom line, what this agreement does is the impact on the town, and these, once again, keep it, keep in mind, it's based on the values, it's based on the collections, it's based on the tax rate, there are a lot of variables to this. Bottom line, it impacts the town by another seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Now, well, I think Commissioner Irwin mentioned our expenses. Our finance department, and when, when the town manager and I talked, we talked about this, the actual cost of that finance department to do those services is seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's in a year's time. The tax office on different occasions had told me their numbers are wash. So the impact, I, I just want to make everyone understand, the true impact to the town, throw out the postage, throw out the advertising, because that goes up and down each year that this happens. The seventy-seven ninety-four seventy goes up or down each year based on what the collections are. But it's basically double that amount. So in this instance, using last year's numbers, the impact is seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy cents.
Are you saying to do this, it costs the county seven thousand dollars?
I'm saying to throw in the finance department's portion, it's that additional cost per year.
So that's what it costs the county?
Yes.
To do our tax collection?
That's, that's, you're already paying the tax office portion, which is the seven, seven ninety-four seven.
No, that's, that's not my question.
But I'm, I'm going to answer it. It's a two-part question.
I just want to be clear.
Okay.
What you're saying is that in order for the county to do our, collect our taxes, that bottom line, it costs the county seven thousand dollars.
It costs the county fifteen thousand...
Eighty-nine forty.
That's the additional cost he's...
He's, he's saying it costs the tax office, but it also costs the finance office.
Yes.
So to do it for us, they're...
I guess, I guess I'm unclear. I'm a little dense.
Well, no.
I just, I just want to get in my head, if, if this system costs the county, bottom line, when you take everything in, what you get and what you pay out... You put it up on the board. What, what I'm hearing you say is that it costs the county a little over seven thousand dollars to do this. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing you say.
No, it's fifteen thousand.
He's, John, he's saying that it costs the tax office, uh...
Seven thousand.
Tax office, seven, seven ninety-four. It also, also in addition, it costs the county, the finance office, seven nine eighty-two. So what he's telling us is their actual cost to do this is fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, but if you take that fifteen thousand and you subtract what you get for collecting the taxes?
It's the difference.
It's the difference. What I'm hearing you say is, by the time when you...
What we have collected for the tax.
What you have collected for the taxes, what you're paying out to do it, the difference is that you're, it's costing the county seven thousand dollars? Is that what I've heard you say?
On, on top of the current collections, yes, sir.
We're losing seven, seventy-five hundred roughly.
So you're losing seventy-five hundred dollars to do this for us?
Right.
Thereabouts.
Okay, all right, that, that's, that's just what I wanted to get clear.
And so that goes back to my statement, if, if three percent's as good as you can do it, I don't see any way we can, we don't have time to do anything else and, and I'm proof, it's, I'm comfortable with the fact that that fifteen, five eighty-nine is your, your cost. You're not trying to profit from us to do this.
Absolutely not trying to profit.
Well, I'll shut up because it doesn't seem that we have anything else to, any other choice at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. County manager, we got a letter from Jerry Falwell, or Mr. Falwell, December the sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, saying that we were under scrutiny because our reserve funds were inadequate. Have we come out from under that?
Commissioner Irwin, I, I wasn't here on December sixteenth. I was here the second week of January and I was passed that letter, just for clarification. You will get an updated audit presentation in April. I believe when you get that, you will find that quite pleasant. That's all I can tell you at this point because those numbers have not been externally released.
The problem that the county has had is we have been under this mandate. And whenever Mr. Carter came in, he started looking at it. A lot of this stuff has been the good old boy handshake, go on down the road, and the county's been eating it. We can't eat it anymore. And I believe, I mean...
We are in official session, huh?
This is what it cost us.
We can make a motion and we can vote. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Am I correct in that? This is an official meeting.
Yes, we got quorum.
Right on us, John.
All right, so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that this contract that you're offering at this point in time is for three percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I make a motion that the town council accept that contract.
Hold your motion. Got a question.
Are we on a, a one-year contract?
It's a three-year contract.
Three years.
It means the same contract, basically, right, Michael?
Yeah, the, the original agreement was, was basically a year at a time and it had a crazy termination.
This contract is for three years.
But with the suggestions from the town, we have incorporated to be a three-year agreement.
It's a three-year agreement with the option to cancel at, with six months notice.
Same, same time.
So that's the motion I'm making.
I second John's motion.
That we accept this contract at three percent.
I want to throw this out before you vote to clear up that, that rumor. It was never no intention to do this thing for a profit. All we was wanting from the start, early on, was just to break even and get what the actual dollars was.
I don't think we ever assumed that that was so, so...
Well, I mean, I just, there's been a lot of rumors out there and I just wanted to clear that.
We have a motion and a second on the town, town council. Mr. Mayor, if I can.
I would request that the council table this into their April seventh meeting to take up then. There was last-minute changes to the contract today and that legal have a chance to review those before accepting.
Okay, based on that, I'll go along with it. I withdraw my motion.
Motion is being drawn. The motion to table that.
I make motion to table.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands on the town council. Five oh, we'll table that to our monthly meeting in April.
And further comments?
Ryan, may I, may I ask her, those the same comments that has been in the chain?
That she's approved. Our attorney just hasn't.
And I would, I would further state for the board of commissioners, if there are any indifferences that exist to allow our county attorney and the town's attorney to work those out prior to your meeting, I believe she has the, the direction from the board. I'm sure yours does as well and we can make this a seamless transition, I'm in hopes.
Just, just something to note, when I'm read number eight, it, it looks a little funky. Just look at that and it says taxpayer owning taxes to both. I think that maybe owing taxes would, would change meaning in that section a little bit. It, it's a little confusing the way it reads to me, but it may be because I'm not intelligent enough to understand it.
I understand there, we don't like to admit ownership, but I understand what you're We'll get that straightened out.
Wes, I'll turn it back to you for your councilman's comments.
Go down the line here with any council comments. Councilman Terry McGee has nothing. Mike Leir?
Well, I'd like to make a comment that in the past, I've been on the board for a long time. And with these joint meetings, we've always said what's good for the town is good for the county and what's good for the county is good for the town. I'd hoped that we could bring the number down on the, the percentage because it's not good for the town. But this is what we got, this is what you say that you got to have and I'll take it as that and we'll try to still keep working together.
Councilman Richardson?
I appreciate everybody coming out, certainly appreciate the hard work of everybody, Mr. Carter, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Wilman, and we do, as Mike said, to echo that, we do like to work together, we want to work together and all for one and one for all. So I appreciate everybody getting together today and coming to an agreement.
Councilman Evers?
Echo what Mike said. I've mentioned this in our last meeting, I like getting together like this. I think we need to do more of it, not just when there's five Mondays in a month. But speaking of working together, I think it's time we come together and start forming some kind of master plan, if you will, what direction we're looking to head, whether it be tourism, agritourism, industry, whatever we're looking to do and put our focus towards it and start putting our money towards that. Right now, you know, the way we've been doing it, we kind of put a little money here and a little money there and we never really get anywhere quick. So I think it's time we come together and try to figure out what direction we want ahead and start putting all our money towards that. That's all, all we got.
Councilman Gray?
Well, I'm like Mike, I've been on this for a long time, probably too long, but I think the joint meetings have been real helpful. It's good to get together and talk about things and see where we can come to agreement. I appreciate this meeting in particular and I appreciate being able to talk directly to the commissioners and get their feel for just what's what. I, I do think that, I'm hopeful that these meetings will go on even more often because there are a lot of things that affect the county that also affect Sparta itself and there are a lot of things that affect Sparta affect the county. And so I think there are a lot of places where we can help each other and I'd like, hopefully that'll continue.
Commissioner, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, as mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank y'all for listening to, to what I had to say. I think there was some valuable information that needed to be brought out at that time. Again, I hope nobody takes that personal or offensive in any way. It's not meant to be that way. This is a factual meeting, so I felt like I needed to prove some facts. On a happier note, I do want to say this, that for the past three weekends, we've had a group of volunteers that's gone around this county and cleaned this county up on the roadside and the parks, the streets, you name it. They've been out here picking up trash and litter that some individuals think that our county is a complete landfill. With that in mind, I want to thank those folks that got out there these past three weekends in rough weather sometimes and went out and picked up tires, rims, trash, plastic, you name it, bags, political signs, metal, everything else that they could find, they packed it up, set it on the side of the road and got it to the landfill. I also want to thank the county for doing that and letting those folks use the landfill and get rid of that stuff. Our county and our town look so much brighter when it's clean and I want to encourage all of our citizens, not only in the town, but the county, to keep it glint clean and keep it green. And if you see somebody littering, don't be afraid to pick up the phone and holler. Let's stop it while we got a chance.
I do have one more comment. Looking at the clock, this may be the shortest joint meeting we've ever had, depending on how worried you folks get.
John Miller would be happy.
I had the same thoughts, John. I just looked up, I was thirty-five minutes.
Basically doing basketball season.
All right. That concludes, Mark, we'll start with you. Commissioner comments?
Yeah, kudos to the cleanup crew. Keep Allagana clean. Looks so much better. I would just say on, on this matter, I, I expressed some challenges and pushback with the work that we did with the four percent because I felt like, you know, I, I know town citizens or county citizens and it's going to be an impact. And when you look at those percentages that, that Wes, that you pointed out, you know, a percentage is, is, is a kind of a difference between some numbers. So we don't know what kind of money they're taking in and taking out and with our small size, it doesn't take much to really change that percentage. And like I said, I, I didn't vote in favor of the four percent, but the majority of the board did and I'm, and I serve on this board and so I'm, I'm glad there was some, some work to, to help with that somewhat. I would have been okay working with it some more, but I've got to work with the group, so I hope you, you respect that. But like I said, I did, I did voice some... But like I said, I did, I did voice some concerns with it. And I do appreciate the meetings and appreciate all of you working for the town citizens. And I hope you understand our work for the county, which includes the town, but, you know, it's, it's two separate operations kind of working, hopefully jointly, so. And we do need to visit these kinds of deals and agreements more often than thirteen years, which would help eliminate some of this stuff, so, thank you all.
Mr. Bobby?
The, uh, I've always said what's good for the town is good for the county, and what's good for the county is good for the town. I think this agreement is good for both of us. And I really appreciate that the town manager and the county manager were able to work together and get a lot of these details worked out. And I think that's, going forward, I think we need more of that cooperation to let, that these two gentlemen sit down and look at the numbers and talk to each other and get a feel for how, you know, to present what either one of us are talking about. And I think that's been a big plus in this. It's, uh, been something that's gone on now for several, several months. It'll be behind us here in a few weeks. I think it's just minor details, you know, for the lawyers to work out. I just look forward to us continuing these meetings. And, uh, I would invite all of you to thank everybody who helped clean up the county for these last few weekends. And like, uh, the mayor said, if you see somebody throwing out a pizza box or throwing out something, I don't care if it's on a secondary road. Suzanne and I have been cleaning up our road, and I pretty well know where the trash is coming from. But people have to take responsibility for themselves and don't dirty up the county. Throw that in the floorboard when you get to your house, they're in the trash can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Just to echo the same sentiments, the trash cleanup, I had to run down to Mount Airy when it started, the park store. It was all down eighteen north. It amazed me at the people that were out there, and it was cold that morning, and, and they was just all way up and down the road. And as I come back up the road, there's sitting just boatloads of trash bags. And that's a good thing. We all, we all need to work, strive to do that. And, uh, for all the folks that put that together every Saturday, on the kudos to them because they've done an outstanding job. And going to the, the tax collection thing, I hope that the county showed that they tried to cooperate and, and we put it right down on the 3% there. And, uh, that that showed you the council that we was trying to cooperate and make things work. You know, we all know that it costs more to do business today than it has ten, fifteen years ago. But I do say this, I think some of this stuff that we might, you might need to look at every couple, three years. You know, just to, everybody sit down at the same table and just look and, and not go ten or twelve years. And, and that's a long span. And one other, one other thing, Wes explained more on this, the disaster relief money. They've got money over there to help folks that's displaced. And, uh, people need to go to EMS, Daniel Rotten, and fill out a little information that there and get it started. And the money's there to use for living, I guess is the best way to explain that. It's not for construction funds, but it's, uh, light bill, phone bills and that type of stuff. So we would encourage folks to, uh, to come and apply for that. That's all I have.
Michelle?
I would like to commend both of our managers here for their cooperative spirit of working together so well. I know our manager has commented that it was a, a pleasurable experience working with Mr. Wilman. And, uh, everyone was, uh, willing to listen and to come to the table. So, uh, kudos to you both and also to the town council and for working so well together. And, uh, you know, we're not in two separate orbits here. We're, we're on the same planet, working for the same folks. So, and that's all the Allegheny County citizens, the Sparta town citizens as well as the, the county citizens. So I just want to reiterate what has been said before, that we were just trying to cover the cost of the county. You know, we're not trying to profit off of, off of the town citizens. It's just simply covering the cost. And when you're working with, you know, a small budget, when you're working with a small amount of staff, your costs go up. And, uh, it was just a reflection of that, is, uh, just covering our costs, so. But thank you all again, and we do need to get together more often. That's all I've got.
Mr. John?
Cooperation still begins with communications, always has and always will. It's better to talk it out than to shout it out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to add-
One, one thing before, before we finish. People go by and look at the Veterans Memorial at nighttime. The lights are up, the new lights have been replaced. And I think it's, uh, it's well worth going by at nighttime and seeing, seeing how nice it works.
I just want to comment on the board. We've done, we've put a lot of time in on this, and I know the managers and staff, tax office, finance and server lobby has done a tremendous job trying to put all this together. Thank the town council for all your support, the things we've done and done in the past, and we will do in the future. But like John says, communication, that's where we're all at. And, uh, let's try to make a point to have more meetings, joint meetings.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Hang on, hang on, town managers comment. Wait, I need to turn it back to Wes, excuse me, Wes.
No, no comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to your jar.
Hang on. County manager comments.
I'd like to say that, but I, I would like to say this. There are times when towns and counties, and it's, it doesn't matter which towns and counties there are, they're going to have discussions on this level at this magnitude. There are going to be differences. I, I, we've all been through that. What I agree most with what's been said is, is having these meetings. What I would like to encourage these meetings to be tuned more towards is how we work to, to move forward and how we move in a positive manner and work on some of these issues, you know, a lot of them. And I'll, I'll pick on Ryan for a minute. He's, he's actually younger in his, his job than I am, so I can pick on him, I'm the elder of the two. But, uh, you know, there are, there are a lot of items that we are both tasked with that have either, uh, lacked attention, needed attention. There's a lot of things out there. So I think collectively, our relationship continues to grow. And as we do that, we begin working towards some of these goals that we've talked about. And in doing that, I think that's what strengthens both the county and the town boards. And we can, we can get to a point where we are. You know, we're having good meetings and productive meetings and demonstrating, you know, what interest we have and how to get there. So I'm looking forward to that. I appreciate everyone here tonight. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
No one has anything else, so I hear a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All in favor. Thank everybody for coming.
Town council, any motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. And all in favor, show of hands, motion to adjourn.